Good stuff. It's about the good early out there Valentine's Day stuff. I have it for, I have it for next week, I promise. Chocolate? Is chocolate the key?
All right, six o'clock, and we'll call the meeting of the Dalton Township Planning Commission work session for January twenty-four to order. Start off first with a roll call. Hey, if I am here, Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
John?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
Everyone is here. Is there anything, excuse me, is there anything to add to the agenda? No changes, anything?
No. During public comment, I will make a few remarks about conflicts of interest.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make them approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Well, we will move on to, we do have some public here. We have items that we'll be covering tonight, you'll have the opportunity, I think, some interest on particular instances, but this is a general conversation. I will open that up, you're allowed up to three minutes, so at six oh two, open up the public comment. Would any of our public like to comment? We're intimidating bunch, that's one thing.
Where's that second?
Yeah, when we get to some of the individual things that you can discuss. Six oh three, I will close the public comment.
Then just the note on conflict of interest?
Yes.
If, um, the bylaws states that, um, where a conflict of interest has been determined, the commission members shall depart from the table and not participate in any way of the matter, provided however that the commission members may permit the member having the conflict to remain in the meeting room in particular circumstances, including by way of example, an application which involves property in which the membership, the member has ownership interest. So just as soon as something comes up.
Okay.
If you, if it's determined you have a conflict of interest, you should leave the table. Um, you can remain in the room of the planning commission.
You're out of here.
Allows based on ownership interest.
Put on the umpire.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got that as, uh, and it does not, does it say anywhere what specifically states is a conflict of interest other than having the, the property ownership, or is there anything that?
Yes.
You have, uh?
We should all have a copy of this. These are the bylaws from Jenny question, Lorraine gave me my own set. Yeah, then it talks, there's a whole section about, um, if a family member is involved in application or request before the commission, um, if the commission member has business or financial interest in the property involved in the application or request or in the matter at issue, um, if there are other circumstances in which the commission member has conflict of interest, and it also says that the planning commission may by, may by majority vote decides that someone has a conflict of interest. Three things automatic and one, one thing that lets us decide.
So is it really the members first, is their opinion whether they feel they have a conflict of interest? If it's, unless it's one of those things we could, I guess, at that point, vote on if someone, if it doesn't quite fall into one of those.
Right, it's debatable, it can be voted on, there's some that are obvious, these will be super obvious. I mean, Todd's is less obvious, so you can decide more on that one.
All right, well, we get to those, we do it at the time when we come to that in the agenda, when we get to the actual?
Yes, that's the first thing we do when we reach that agenda item.
Okay.
Where it's discussed.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, we have some discussion items, which, one of them comes from the board. They're asking us to review, and I guess, as a history, is there, would you like to give us a little bit of history on what your understanding is at, at this point, what they're looking for?
The current zoning ordinance allows RV to camp if you have, allows an RV to be used as a home for housekeeping for sixty days, administrative approval. If you have a home with, um, sanitary facilities, so bathroom, running water, has to be on the same parcel or an adjacent parcel. A few board members would like the planning commission to look into expanding that to being allowed on parcels that don't have facilities on the parcel or on an adjacent parcel.
Does it only pertain to the homeowner themselves and their own personal camper, or is it, I can have a friend come and stay for sixty days?
You can have a friend come stay for sixty days. You're allowed to store up to one trailer that you don't own.
Okay.
And that's, um, it just.
Yeah.
Only one.
This doesn't apply, the lakes have their own, correct? The lake has the one where you could camp on a parcel, you can, and that's the fourteen days?
I believe that it's, um, the same throughout the township.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was not, yeah, the lakes don't have their own set.
I know there's some.
I believe it was passed for the lakes.
Okay.
Was that?
Maybe that's what, I know there's.
People in Lake District.
Yeah, that makes, I remember there was something. All right. So as a discussion, um, does anyone have concerns either way, continuing the way we are, or expanding that, potentially going?
I, I don't mind. I think, I think the gist of what the, some of the people on the board are trying to say is that they want to be able to camp on a vacant parcel, not a, not a dwelling, not, okay. And the most important thing to consider here is sewage. The reason why this was written the way it is, is because of sewage. You can't, you can't camp for an extended period without having a sewage plan in place. Um, so I'd like to, whatever we end up doing, which I really don't have an opinion either way, but we, I did call the health department and talk to them, and there are lots of areas around Muskegon County that have septic's and wells on vacant parcels for just this thing, they put in an RV pad. He said it's very common, they either have a pool barn, or, he said out in Sullivan Township, they even have what they call farm buildings. And basically, all it is, is like a big cold storage building, but they do have like a bathroom. And they have a septic permit, they have a well permit, and they can do whatever they want according to their township, so I, I'd like to make sure that if we change it to allow it, that we make sure that we put in there, e- either it's limited by a certain number of days that you think somebody could go on their tanks alone before they have to go dump, or they provide their own sewage on their site.
No pun intended.
Clean their storage tanks. Okay, whatever.
Yeah. I mean, the idea is, is it rustic camping, or is this, um? And I see, it's really hard to be a big brother on some of this stuff, and say you can't, because the most innocent of things, someone will find a way to make it so that it is not, and we'll have a, a bigger.
I just also want to be careful, because even the state of Michigan does not allow primitive campgrounds to not have water and not have sewer, so you know, it's.
Is it up to a certain amount of sites?
I think you can have four, you can have four sites without doing anything, but once you get to five and above, you have to have one, at least one potable water, um, connection and at least one or two, they call them privies though, they're not really portageons, because they have to have five hundred gallon capacity. Basically, you're building an outhouse, so I don't want to, sewage is important to people, the environment. You don't want to, I don't want to be part of destroying Dalton Township in the future, so.
I think it's a tough one, because I, I definitely agree that somebody with a parcel planned wants to go camp on it through, should be able to, but.
With a septic system?
With a septic system. But then you got somebody else that wants to park right in their neighbor's front yard and camp for six months, live in their yard, guys for everybody around. That is not cool. So, is sixty days much?
Do we have anybody that's come in and used this at all, any, anyone on the, is it with thirty days right now?
Yeah, we have had it in the past, a couple times it's been used for COVID. Some of the family has it, they decided to stay in the trailer to quarantine. There is, I have in the past allowed for an RV connected directly to a septic to be used as a temporary dwelling or living quarters. While, while they're building, if they have.
Yeah.
Paperwork into me that shows they're in the process of building a permanent structure.
That's, that's what's on Michalinda right now.
That's for, for twenty days. It's for ninety days, and then it can be extended for another ninety days.
I think that's what's going on in Michalinda right now, they're building the house, and they do have a trailer on site there too, that.
Okay.
So they have a, I mean, it makes sense if you're in the process, that, that's one that.
We won't for right tomorrow.
Did you release that one?
That's, how many of these are taking place already in the board's body?
Probably a ton.
No, it depends, yeah, so.
Then that is one of the more common enforcement items. That's also rather hard to prove that somebody's living in a camper. Unless, even when the slides out, it can be difficult, because people have slides out for a number of reasons.
And they're running a generator?
Yeah.
I guess.
That's the, usually that's the telltale sign, that generator's being run, or there's, there are connections to it.
So what exactly is the board wanting us to do? Extend it?
They want, I mean, from, remember when we all met together at that big joint session? Those, some of the board members, they wanted to be able to do it, they wanted more, just, they didn't want to have to do it on a dwelling, a land with dwelling, they want to do it on a vacant parcel. So I think that's what they want us to figure out, is how to allow it on a vacant parcel, and if it's feasible to allow it on a vacant parcel.
Without, without access to sanitary facilities.
Correct, correct.
It is up to two, you can have two of the administratively approved ones for thirty days. So you get thirty and thirty, right?
Yes.
And then there's a third one they could get, temporary special use, maybe authorized by us, bring the total to ninety days. So that's where we sit right now, so there is up to ninety days at this house that somebody could use.
But that's with access to someone's facilities.
Right.
So worms, man, that opens up a can.
I'm with, I mean.
Not a can of worms either.
More than fourteen days in a calendar year, because that is, that's pretty standard. In a, Fulton Township has the ordinance, where it's similar to what, um, the board members are talking about, where you can go out and camp, but you have to have your permit on your site, and you have to.
So you really have two, two separate things to define, the vacant land use and the residential occupied parcel?
I think it would be a good idea to keep those separate. Otherwise, unless you want to move the timeframe down on the dwelling attached.
So, I think these ordinances that you referenced here, I think they're very old, they've been around for quite a while, at least ten, fifteen years, I think, especially Lake Ten Townships. Um, I think what, what we're talking about doing, so several counties and or townships are starting to move this direction in the last year and a half. The amount of people living in their RVs as housing skyrockets is, is starting to become an issue, so I think, I think this could use a, a pretty major rewrite. Like, if you, if you reference Sheboygan County, like the county itself, they decided to take this on not that long ago, because it was such an issue of people wanting to do it on vacant parcels. And they've written some really good, I mean, it's, it's very detailed, and, um, it describes like, if you're living in it because you're building a house, and it, it's kind of like a, basically written like a flowchart, if you're in it for this reason or this reason. They even have one for camping and hunting, if you just want to camp and hunt. And I think you'd be surprised at how long they let you do it, but you, they, as long as your sewage and your water is completely taken care of, then they've said, you know, what does it really hurt? And what does it really hurt if you're living on your property in an RV? Why do we care whether you live in a house? If you have all the, what you need to do it without polluting your environment, your neighborhood, whatever, then, um, I noticed in Sheboygan County, though, there's setback, they have setbacks, they, they don't want your RV right twenty feet from the parcel line, so maybe that might be something we want to consider if.
I thought that'd be a hot button for a lot of people, I think, because what if somebody builds a two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar house, and somebody buys an acre next to them and puts a camper on it? I mean, that can happen, and it's that person's right if it's an option.
If the setbacks, their screening or whatever are present, then I don't think it would really.
If you don't want somebody to put a camper next to your two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, you buy it.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, so, go ahead, sorry.
What if, what if there was something like, they had to show proof of like, or like receipt for dumping to extend? Like, you gave them a window, and then if they wanted to re-up it, they could come in and bring a receipt proving that they cleaned up their mess, and then it would be extended for another period of time.
That'd be a good option. As well as.
Or, or real estate, they have septic, so they're gonna do you three days.
Three days.
Yeah.
Three days?
Ah, see, I have no idea. I've camped for fifteen years, I mean, it's, that's what you get.
Got you.
With a couple kids, that's three days.
With kids, it's full of twenty-four hours.
That's saying if you're trying to.
If you're trying, you can go maybe three, four, if you like, don't do anything.
Yeah, that's probably a little impractical.
What else does this affect? Sweet, right now, can you put well and septic on vacant property, just to have it?
I couldn't find that, I looked, after I talked to the health department.
That is nothing that says you can't.
Right.
Those are issued from the.
Yes.
Department.
And the health department will let you?
A lot of times.
They want you to.
Before they build.
Casey, I remember back, we had this discussion in October, you made a comment about dumping, and it's not as easy as some people think.
Especially in the winter.
Where to go?
Yes.
Is that, can you elaborate?
There's nowhere to go right now, there, there's, I can't even think of anywhere that you, oh. See, this is the problem, you used to be able to dump at Muskegon State Park, because the north campground is open all year, but their septic tank apparently can't handle it, and they were getting lots of people, so now you can only dump if you stay there. Um, so that's pretty much the only one in Muskegon County. Now, when all the campgrounds are open, yeah, there's a plethora of choice, you can go to any number of campgrounds.
Seasonally.
I mean, Lake Shenappahoe's dump station is right in front, so they just let people pull in, I think they charge ten or fifteen dollars, and then you dump them. I think, I don't know anything about camp. Off-season, when the campgrounds are closed.
So would you say that, uh, off-season through turkey season, it's difficult to find a place?
Yes. Yes. I have seen people pop the lid off their septic tank at home, pump it into there.
Yeah, okay. I remember that point, that's where I sort of locked in on, and not knowing that this would come around again, that.
It's really a Michigan thing, when you go down south or out west, you can go to the rest area, and they have a dump station. And they're open, you know, they're, so it's, it's really a Michigan thing, doesn't, you, I think the only one I can think of is at the Flying Jay in Grand Ledge. So, you drive all the way to like Lansing and.
Last turn to find a solution to something, that there's only one solution, and that's, yep, septic exists, you gotta grow.
Or you have, or we have to keep this in, that you have to be in a dwelling that has, lets you use the bathrooms.
For a couple in their camper, maybe you were saying this earlier, how many days would their typical RV hold their sewage and gray water, would this be a, a once a week then?
You can make it a week.
At May?
You're not making it a week.
Really, okay.
I mean, what size camper do you have?
It wasn't chilling kickoff in the.
Yeah, like if you. It's got to be tanks, like, sometimes if you have like those smaller campers and stuff you were talking about, maybe a day, maybe a, a day and a half.
Bumper pole, I mean, you're gonna have twenty-five gallon tanks on it.
Right.
You're not gonna make two days. On, on average out there, you're gonna get three days.
Everybody agrees well and septic?
Well and septic sounds like the, I don't think there's a way around it that, that it's not complicated, there's not, without, yeah.
If for some reason.
Required, and so people aren't gonna let you dump to search out.
Certainly.
Yeah, good thing.
That's your cousin Eddie.
That's possible. The amount of rive drain.
Certain septic drain fields need a pump.
Yeah.
Like, uh, so, that's another to necessity or utility.
It costs somebody twenty grand to have.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Although, the health department person did tell me that typically the septic is quite small, they don't require a lot, they require, he said, they require one tank in a small drain field. Um, they used to allow just a tank, but they no longer think that's sufficient, so they, they make you have the drain field too. So, it's, it's not the same size that you'd have if you were a, a big family home, so at least that's nice.
So at this point, I guess, through conversation, I guess at this point we're saying well and septic is required?
Yeah, if you want to be on a vacant parcel.
Anyone not, speak up please, if you have other opinion, because we want to make sure we get everybody heard, I don't think ever.
Maybe table it till next week, maybe it's from general public.
Totally know the way to enforce it.
Yeah, like to comment.
That way you know, like, you don't even have to leave your office, you can call the health department and find out if parcel number, whatever, has a, has a well and septic. So, it makes it a lot easier on you guys, having to go out there and see what they're doing with their sewage or.
Know what they're doing out there. Doing what I do every year up in the woods up north, making one. We don't want that everywhere.
Don't want to encourage it.
Let's say the address again.
Yeah. I don't have a camper.
All right, there, we stuck with that one, you think?
It's up.
Okay. Next one's the enforcement ordinance. As far as discussion on this one, Steve, it sounds like the idea is to determine the process with the three, the three, three left, yeah, the three notices. Is that kind of the direction, is they want it to be more, at what parts?
Not, not for it to be more or less, so the reason we passed the man has resolutions instead of pursuing it as ordinances before, is because I was trying some things, like when we did the automatic appeals to the zoning board of fields, and that process didn't work very good. So I didn't want that to be set in an ordinance already, which is gonna take months to change. So essentially, these resolutions were trials, but we've really, we've basically worked out the, the kinks. So, I mean, you guys can make adjustments where necessary, imminence, as you're going through your process. Really only, I think, under additional provisions, number ten there, the nine compliance is a legal defense. I only put that in there so that if I had made a resolution that didn't work very good, and we needed to veer from it, feeling we would be fine while it was in a trial phase. But that can be taken out as it's moving into ordinance form, and then whatever version you guys, if you want to adjust anything else.
Number eleven is funny. Compliance is achieved, then we send you a thank you letter, that's.
You know, I try to be nice.
You, you are, that's wonderful.
Over the last two years, I've probably become a less honest person, and I probably will become less nice for the next years.
That's some major goodwill on your part, though, after all they went through, and you just say thank you.
Yeah, that's a nice, friendly, uh, recognition of compliance or acknowledgement.
I think it is nice, you know, because that's what you actually need in society, in society.
Knowledge.
Put it together to achieve a state of negotiated peace.
Right.
Extremely difficult.
Peace.
I didn't mean to laugh, but.
You like peace.
It's.
And, and most of the time, is it, is it, is there at any point where like after the, what percent after the first notice do you have a resolution, and what pers, how many times does it go to the second, how many times it go to the third, and?
Most cases are resolved out just second letter. They're, either they get the first letter or the second letter and just clean it up.
And.
I don't know the percentage.
It's, most of it is blight, there are some violations that are, you have blight or living in campers. Some violations are, you know, work without permits. Most of it's, most of it's blight.
And it's working now? I mean, the, the way it's set now, I, we have not, this is again, one of those things we have not heard a great deal of.
It seems to be working decently well, you know, I think, uh, what we ended up with the ZBA is by the time we were doing the automatic appeal, see, people either would have stuff about not getting, or whatever it may be, some sort of excuse, or they would say, yes, I'm in violation, I'm intending to get to it, I just haven't gotten to it. So we've had almost no one be in the position that says that the ordinance is wrong, I should have a right to do that, which is what I was attempting to do with the automatic appeals, and so, it, I mean, the process is working decently well now.
Do you want?
Although Steve deals with it significantly more than I do.
So, these, these figures that you sent us in this, very good, by the way. Um, so you're saying that in twenty nineteen, there were a hundred and thirty-eight cases, and now we're down to only sixty-four in a year?
Yes.
Wow.
Although, there, that was.
What do we attribute that to?
The number of complaints received.
Less complaints received?
Less complaints received, although I don't, I don't believe that's reflective of the current number of actual cases.
So we think less people are complaining, but there's still just as many violations?
Probably just as many violations, just less, there are less complaints.
And I think that can fluctuate quite a bit, right, so we got, now, everyone's probably, someone aware of the case, right? So if someone like that is patrolling and trying to turn in as many people as he can for various types of reasons, then a single individual could do thousands of complaints.
Are those complaints anonymous?
So we now, when we are here with you, I have to fill out a form that we follow up with. The complaint at this point is anonymous unless a judge were to request it.
And who's the?
I can debate that either.
Who would be the face of the township when they come in and scream at somebody for, it's the first letters, it's Steve and?
Steve usually catches most.
Clay sends out the letter, they usually, you know, me and I tell them they have to talk to Clay.
So you guys need to change offices, is that what you're saying?
Well, so, yeah, usually, since Steve is in on a daily basis, whereas Clay is in once a week, then he usually catches a decent, I mean, all the walk-in and call-in stuff, forezone, some at the front desk between the, the two women there, and then, you know, if there's some sort of major incident, it's kicked up to me, but sometimes people contact me direct.
So is there any, is there times when that, after the, the completing of the complaint, and then it's investigated, where they find that it's not a violation, is that a?
Decently often.
Okay.
One or two in the last two weeks that were either unwarranted or didn't warrant.
So you could, you could at that point say it's it's it stops at that point. So what do you mean? We don't doesn't proceed through the rest of the process?
Correct.
Correct. So if it's working now in the way the system, is there anything anyone sees in here that of concern or would like to add or delete any of this? It's a fifteen step, pretty much uh, out to. And what you need to do to stay away and there's really not a, anything that I read in here that seems to be heavy handed or overlooking things. It sounds pretty.
Certified mail that is. Court, when they send out their documents, use this first class mail. The certified mail. Go understand the intent behind it, making sure they received it, that it was delivered. They make you sign for it.
Yes.
A lot of times, people don't go, they're not home. So they don't sign for it or that if they're not home, they have to go to the post office and sign for it. And a lot of times we don't receive that, that they didn't get the letter until.
How much of a burden is that on us though if if someone, if they've been, if they've received? If the attempt has been made, what more have have, what else can we do as a municipality to make sure they get that other than?
We could send out another copy first class, which I've done that. At times.
Is it required that we send it certified or we just do that because we want somebody to sign it?
So the um, the resolution requires the third letter be sent out. Certified.
But is there any like law that requires that or do courts require that?
No, courts don't require.
At one time, the original, there wasn't that step. So we didn't have a way of saying that here was another attempt to go to the person that showed at least a form, a format that was something that was readily available and really not intrusive to us or to the person. Really all you're asking is here's your citation. You know, signed or you've made the attempt to have it delivered to them by a third party.
Does the attempt hold any weight though? Like if you're like, oh yeah, we sent it. Here's the thing they didn't get it. I mean, does that, does that help? Does the judge say, oh, well, you've sent it certified? Does that help at all?
Oh, yeah.
No.
Because if we, if we have to send a copy of the citation.
Yeah.
So if you don't personally serve the citation, if we post it on the door of the mailbox, then we have to send a copy first class mail.
Yeah.
According to the ordinance. And I believe that's state law as well.
Don't you think we should just send all three? Well, how do they, how, so are are there three different letters? Two just go by first class and the third one goes by registered mail?
Correct.
Have you ever thought about just doing all three by first class? Cause I don't, honestly, it doesn't.
That's always previously done.
And what was wrong with that? What, did that not work or?
I feel that worked. There's discussion.
It was discussion through the ZBA when we're doing the automatic appeals.
The problem is registered mail is like a from nineteen ninety. Like I get them at the campground and if they don't deliver them later, I just throw them away. Like I don't care what you have to tell me if it looks important, but you know that, and the problem is the mail people, this is what they write for like who it's from. And you're just like, okay, do I, should I go and bother to get that? Like is it, is it even important? Because of course you get stuff sometimes from from lawyers and stuff that is not important at all. And you're like, oh, I'm glad I wasted my time driving to the post office. Now, of course, we're a business, so we get like a bunch of stuff from, that doesn't mean anything, but maybe these people get it, but like what's the?
It's the, it was the fringe. It was, it was the people that were making efforts to evade and avoid receiving it. And then it becomes a matter of.
This is the ultimate avoidance because you definitely don't even get the letter then, like telling you it's the end.
There was one that took a, took the steps off so you couldn't get to the door. So.
That's great.
I I mean, I, at that point, that was like the the head scratching where you think, well, how do you do this so that there's a, and a, and mail is pretty simple. It's something that goes out every day and you have a way. But it it was, it's probably, I don't know how many times is that even necessary?
I, my experience. My, from what I understand.
Third step.
Banks, the IRS, those types of institutions rely on certified mail in a big way. It's important. These people need to see it. There needs to be some accountability, et cetera. You know, the mechanism like today, email, texts, snail mail, you know, it's just, that doesn't mean anything.
The child support system uses something similar, but you have a court appointed person who shows up at businesses or they find out where, but I mean, that's actually a pursuit. Ours is pretty passive and and I think, you know, I don't, it, do you feel that is the third step? Has it stopped anyone? Did anyone ever say, oh, I didn't know about the other two, so I got the third one now? I mean, does that save us at all?
I think it definitely reinforces the.
I don't.
Uh, the issue and the importance and the. You know, and to me it says, we're gonna bring this to a conclusion. One, one way or the other.
If it doesn't help us in the end and it costs the township money, then, you know, we could save some money if it's not helping and not do it.
I know the only time I ever received a certified letter was a summons to court. So I was sure to open that.
Well, and when they get their summons from the court because they ignored the third letter, that's, they'll be sure to.
You don't even get jury duty through that. So you know, there's, there's a lot of things with with civil responsibility that 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 carries some weight that by not showing up, you're going, oh, I didn't get it. That never works for them.
Registered mail just doesn't pack the same punch that it did. I remember like ten, fifteen years ago, oh my gosh, I got a registered letter. I have to drop what I'm doing and drive to the post office right now and pick it up. And now people just throw away all the time. They don't even care at all. So I feel like what's a registered letter nowadays? Like seven, eight, nine dollars?
Uh, seven fifty for return receipts. I have not been requesting return receipts. They're about one fifty.
And as few as we probably need to send out, I I don't think it's an issue, is it? The cost? Couple hundred bucks, hundred bucks a year?
I have. Maybe two a month.
Do you, what are you, what you're feeling on it? Would it help you to take it away? Does it hurt you to keep it in either way?
I've never been a big fan of it. I don't think it.
It's another step for you.
It's another step and I don't.
Drive to the post office to fill it out? Or can you do it from here?
No, we have the slips here.
It's nice. At least you're not wasting your drive time.
But it does.
Administratively, it's.
The thing is, we put in the ordinance and we don't, that's a step we don't follow. Then we take it to the court for a cleanup order. And they show up and say, well, hey, I didn't, you know, they didn't send this certified letter. If that was the one that we didn't send a certified letter for. We have to send a certified letter. We write a ticket, wait another month and a half for a court date.
Yeah, we're just.
Sure, you might as well just do it.
Yeah, I, I I remember the conversation about it. It was pretty universal on the ZBA about that steps because it sounded, because the weight was would we potentially have somebody that would come back? We'd harm someone by the fact they didn't receive it. So we were really looking at the the thimble full of stuff rather than the bucket. I think we. We take it away. It doesn't hurt my feelings now knowing how this process has worked out. We've had some history on it now, I guess, that. You know, it's, it's not been a successful thing or hasn't hurt cost us anything or.
Cause if you're still getting the third letter, it's clear you didn't care. There's no way you didn't get the first one and the second one. And don't you typically make contact with these people most of the time if you can?
Most of the time.
So most of the time they already know that, so.
Asking what needs to be cleaned up.
I will say our mail is terribly unreliable.
Have you ever, I'm processing where, like say for an instance of blight, somebody physically was unable to take care of it themselves or didn't have the means to?
Yes.
Then we can somehow put them in connection with the right people or?
Yeah, and that's Clay's worked with plenty of people about that. They just, if they can't. And he's really good at figuring out who's actually incapable and who's just trying to use that as an excuse. And I've seen him work with someone where.
Is this something that works for Clay?
Just because they couldn't take care of it.
This, this would work, this has been working for Clay with the exception of, I mean, if we take that one out, if we take the certified out. Um, and we just go with a a third step of what we've done on the first two. Does everyone think that's okay?
Well, for simplifying.
You give me Yellowstone T-shirt, send it in with that. I think we're onto something that maybe I had. I mean, he, has he had any issues with anything or any concerns that he has with this? I mean, it does, it sounds pretty simple, like it's, it's been kind of flushed out a little bit, not to go back to the subject system.
Three letters is typically what's sent out. The judge will require substantial notice before they issue on the cleanup orders.
Steve, I'm not trying to add work here, but do you think just personally for ordinance on blight is detailed enough? Is there ambiguity a lot that comes up and?
I think it's exactly what it needs to be.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
It's has a little bit of interpretation, but it's pretty much straightforward where, you know, inoperable cars.
Okay.
Dunking trash.
Too many landlords.
If they're out in the yard, then they can be discarded material because he's going to reasonably be using. More than three.
Clay provided a lot of pictures when we started doing this part. I mean, when you see the pictures. There's, there's, we're not, we're not overly sensitive on things. These are things that are, you know, literally there has been a nuclear holocaust at some point, but you're going, that's your yard? I thought that was their world.
There's a lot of elements untouched because it's just plain based, right?
Yes.
There's a ton of it.
Does light taken into consideration the entire perimeter of one's light? Or the street view?
Usually it's what can be seen from the street or um. Going up the driveway, we're allowed to inspect the curtilage.
Okay.
When you're allowed to inspect the curtilage, we have to stay out of the curtilage. But it's, a certain area is off limits. Like essentially if a mailman can go up to the door. Um. Mailman can go there, we can go there, do the inspection. Like we can walk up to the door, but we can't walk around. Yeah, walk around without a search warrant.
What about if it's on the adjacent parcel then? Do, do they let you, do you ever try to go there?
If the property owner allows us to go into the knowing in some cases it's far back in the woods, so if a property owner on an adjacent lot.
Gives you permission that you do that.
Gives permission or takes, takes us back there then. And we can do that as long as we're not on their property.
Right.
All right, all those I'd like to see this, you go with the fifteen steps in the case of the.
I think ten could come out. I don't. Think now that it's going to be an ordinance, it really doesn't need that.
I'll try to work it into a workable language. That's, that captures the process and the steps that need to be taken. So, you know, three letters need to be sent out before a citation. But there might be some exceptions.
So seven would just need to be changed where it would not, third letter is sent by registered mail. It'd just be third, sent by standard mail. Civil infractions.
Yeah.
Send that via process. They still have the ZBA as an option.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I do know, I think there's no fee was discussed. On that and appeal for no fee by a certain date. Like.
Yeah.
I would like to take out the no fee. I think it would be best if they're appealing it if they were.
Yeah.
Um, if they pay those fees, then they could always be reimbursed by.
Because otherwise you'll just get people start, that they wait for the enforcement process instead of just going to the ZBA to begin with. You just, yeah, I agree with you. It probably will. You don't ever wanna offer something for free that other people have to pay for because you did something wrong.
Yes, it costs about six hundred dollars to run a public hearing.
Right.
All right, everyone agree that ten also would be, any feelings on it if you took ten out? Change anything for anybody? Feel strongly either way? He said no, it's a resolution. I guess it's not a, kind of redundant. Or any other of the ones that anyone sees issues with or enough to go ahead? And then that would be. For a public hearing then? Would we have to do that as a public hearing?
Yes, that would be a public hearing. I need to prepare a official draft first.
Okay.
And I can do that. I'd like to have the attorney review it, make sure it's not gonna cause any issues.
Okay. All right. Then we are now to review May thirty first agenda items.
May thirty first?
I haven't used to be there anymore.
I'm reading that going, what?
Oh, it'd be so warm if it was May.
Hate to put you back like that, but it wouldn't fit in our calendar. I think under the, we'll get to this when we're talking about the. I think it would be. I think it would be appropriate then for you to stay on this one and.
Yes, you should.
You can be in for discussion though.
Yes, you can be in the room. I just.
You can't sit here anymore.
It's dust.
This one, we have lots of direction. Yeah, it's the lawyer involved or what this. Believe we have your work here then. Your Michael? Perfect. All right, you guys would take a moment and tell us a little bit about what you're looking for here?
Well, basically, Michael is our new neighbor. Moved in from, um, a neighbor that didn't like us so much. He owns that house now. And we've been farming there since two thousand fourteen and I think it would just make sense to be zoned agricultural because that's what it's being just for. And we weren't going to have the zoning change, but Michael expressed interest in getting zoned agricultural. And he was the one that kind of brought it up to us. We thought, well, you know, now we have what? Almost fifty acres here. It would be getting changed. It's not just us, not just our eighteen acres. So we decided to, you know, let's just bring it to the board and see what they have to say about it.
What do we say on the way here too? I mean.
Um, I think it would be important for like any kind of future litigation, uh, because we went through our law school already and it cost the township a lot. Working agricultural, make that process light.
A long one.
So it says it was previously.
It was. That map you showed me is high, high water table. That was the map, I think, nineteen eighty. Right, that's the.
Yeah, that was nineteen eighty.
I don't remember what. So switch with last master plan. I think it's when the only one I saw, previous one they showed me and then.
The first question I had when I read this is, I wanted to know what you want to do that you can't do right now in our two.
We don't want to do anything that we're doing. We just want to make a. We don't want to do anything that we're doing. We just want to make it so it's not like, uh, it doesn't happen again what happened last time, basically. Maybe somebody thinks that since we're R two, we don't have the right to farm there, but the state said we do have the right to farm. So then it becomes like a conflict between us and the township, and then we have to go through all that process again.
Is he intent to farm on that second piece of property then? So it's.
Yeah, we're, I really like what they're doing and want to support it and, you know, I've already started to look at some of the land for similar type of purpose, so it, through our discussion, it made sense to, you know, let it be recognized for the intended use.
Alec, I know the, the one behind us, Creeters, that all used to be agriculture, she used to have like racehorses there and there used to be like a lot of agricultural zoning in the township. I, I always change because, you know, they're going through our lawsuit, people said, you know, move out here to do some of those types of things, you know.
Going to hurt anything to resolve that to Hanks?
I don't know when last it was on that.
Yeah, nineteen eighty probably. I mean, it's been a very long time, I'm sure.
It's been R two for the twenty years I've been in the township, so.
If we go to the people that we, we'd like to have on our at least giving an opinion on that with an attorney, like I think she said it was right, it was, he said yes, no, yes. If you read it. So it's, it's, the question is, is it spot zoning where you just take a parcel and say you can do tax on that parcel? That's a concern. But based on what we're doing, they're already existing in that capacity, so it's really not, we're not doing anything where we're now going to allow somebody to do something that wasn't there.
Yeah, we're not starting a farm.
Yeah, it's, it's a matter of recognizing it as a farm, which is part of our, I guess, we wanted the right to farm and, and having that as if it's not required for it to be, I hate to do that, but I mean.
Yeah, I just think it would avoid future conflicts or something.
So, I, I originally felt that the best way to go about this was to talk as the planning commissioner, as a board, about where farming is allowed, what, what zoning districts, if we could go from that angle instead. From all of my research, I don't, and I appreciate the lawyer, I don't see how it wouldn't be spot zoning. So MSU says, um, these are the four things. If it meets these four criteria, it is spot zoning. The area is small compared to districts surrounding the parcel in question. So the parcels are about fifty acres, but if you look at some of the, there are some very large parcels around there, so I don't think, if you're looking as a percentage of that area, I would say they're unfortunately considered to be small. It says the new district allows land uses inconsistent with those allowed in the vicinity. If we, yes, agriculture, ag and resource conservation allows fourteen additional land uses by special use permit. And unfortunately allows two extra permitted uses, including one very annoying one, marijuana growing. So suddenly you're, you're introducing those parcels to be, to be a use that may not be desirable for the area. The spot zone would confer a special benefit on the individual property owner not commonly enjoyed by owners of similar properties. And because the ag district lets you do so much more, like you can get a special use permit to be, to have a home-based business, to have a campground, a kennel, you can do a ton more. So yes, the people that were still R two, especially the two huge parcels just to the north of them, they couldn't do anything. And, but these two parcels then could do everything that was allowed in ag. Um, and then the existence of the spot zone conflicts with the policies in the text of the master plan and the future land use map. So I didn't read the whole master plan, so I guess I, that's the only one I can't really confirm. I know it's, it's against the master plan. So that was just my opinion. And then there was another one, it says, um, if you can answer yes to one and two and no to number three, then you've covered yourself and it's, you would not, you'd be able to fight any claims of illegal spot zoning. Number one that you have to say yes to is, is the requested use consistent with your master plan map? Which it is not. The master plan map shows it being R two. And then I have to be able to say no to number three, would the denial of the request preclude the property's use for any purpose to which it is reasonably adapted? So I, I could go either way there, so, um, if we refuse to create a spot zone here, would it not allow them to use the property for the person, for purposes which it's adapted? I, I'm I don't know. That, that could have gone either way, so. That's just my opinion. I, I, I think, I think farming and agriculture is so important. I am not sure why we have it only limited to ag when you have these massive parcels in other zoning districts. I, I don't, I don't necessarily see why that restriction is there, but, and I, I think that might be a a safer way for us to get the same thing done.
So address it as acreage versus zone?
Um, the next township over is Fruitland, I think.
That.
Yeah.
directly west.
Yeah. They have, they have like, there's a seventy-five acre chunk right just, just north of Agard. Um, there's that big house that's back there, and then there's next February. Um, I think it's zone R two, like similar to us, but then it has a ag overlay district, so it's like overlaid. So you, with that permitted uses kind of thing. I, this is something I saw when I was looking at the surrounding townships there, because I know we're right on the corner. Touch multiple townships. Ag overlay type thing is what they do.
I just, the other thing is, when I saw this come up, I was like, oh yeah, I really support that. That's great. And then I thought, ooh, we're going to be under, as a board, tremendous amount of scrutiny because it's some, it, it's a huge thing. It has like legal implications and the state, there's so many court cases about spot zoning. And it's somebody who's on our board with us.
But, so, I mean, go along with your idea a little bit. I mean, if, if, what if we just added a line B there, raising and keeping of livestock and other farm animals to R two?
Yes. Are you talking about the ones from A?
Yeah.
Yeah, number one and number two?
Yeah.
Or A and B, sorry, A and B? Yeah, that's what I thought, is I, I'd love to talk about just allowing farming in other districts.
Wouldn't that be easier and still protect someone for what they're already using the land for?
Next, most, I mean, just, just looking from here, I mean, and yeah, there is farther down on the east side of the township there, along the border there, there's smaller parcel, but most of R two parcel is pretty big.
Yes.
There is a lot of them.
In that, in that lower quadrant, left lower quadrant.
I, also, when you start to talk about, because ag is so restrictive, you have to have a five acre parcel to build a house. And then, so it's fine that the, we have the permission of the owners, but what happens when something happens and their life situation changes and they move a month from now?
Changes again.
Right.
Somebody comes back and says, well, why?
I wanted to build a house. I wanted to build a something. Right. So I'd like to come in from the back door and see if we can fix the property instead.
Or just to protect, I mean, to protect what somebody's looking for, for their use.
And to make, to make it fair for everybody.
We've done that for other people too, you know, just to try to protect their use, their current use. And say, well, it's the man in the ordinance, so that it protects the current use, it's not hurting anything.
Yes, my concern is like courts change all the time. You guys won't be here all the time either, you know?
Which, which is no matter what you do.
Right.
They could change his owning.
Yeah, they could change his owning.
Still be a process though, if we did change R two thing. Somebody has to explain themselves why they want to change it back or re- remove something. Have to have discussion.
I'd be curious to dig into the master plan idea more and understand what the logic is there. If it'd be possible to get access to that. Is that on the?
I think her website is.
Yeah, it's on the township website.
That's the number one issue when courts are looking at spot zoning is, what does your master plan say? That's like the first question they always ask. And ours unfortunately shows R two down that whole corridor.
I, I guess a question that I have without looking into it would be, when was that determined and are those people still involved? Uh, and like.
Four years ago, right? Four years ago, we, we.
I'm.
It's due reviewed. Due for review now.
Four months ago, so this is all like.
Yeah.
How long is it written though? Because you guys reviewed it, did you make a lot of changes or not really?
It was rewritten.
We went through it.
It was rewritten four years ago.
Yeah, we went through it.
Because you don't have to rewrite it every time.
It's been done for seventeen years.
Okay.
Right.
So we, we took it and did it.
And did it then.
Now we're at the, again, where when they sent this out, we've done the review and this, again, and this showing us all the statistics and things that he had to do, right? We have to prove that. If it's something we want to look at, if we feel that is something, again, as part of the master plan, I mean, that wouldn't solve our whole issue. That's our, kind of, like you said, we still have. If you did that, you made that part of the master plan, you still have the other issues to look at as far as how it affects the other properties. It's, it needs to be consistent and there's got to be a way for this to, I like Jesse's idea with that, maybe you add the animals.
Or even, I got, I just popped up a better idea as far as the permitted uses, right, for the raising and keeping of livestock and other farm animals. And we, we just revised the ordinance to allow.
Yeah, that's already allowed.
Everybody pet chickens and whatever else, right?
Right. That's a lot, the, the number, the letter B is allowed already in all zones. We just did that.
We just changed that.
The, it's the raising and keeping of livestock and other farm animals. We just rewrote that and approved it, and the board approved it.
You can do it anywhere.
Sounds like the R two is relatively linear. I've I guess when I brought the idea forward to Leo Crystal, I, I wasn't aware of what the stipulations were. It just, it's logically, I was assuming agricultural would give us the, the way we would want, regardless of scenario. And it sounds like it may already be within the realm of.
The, the protection and what, what they went through before.
Right.
Someone could flip the switch again and say, no. And then you have a different opinion and the person that starts the process could be someone that could say, I don't agree. It would take a.
Maybe be more covered under agricultural zoning, but maybe not, I don't know.
This is where the spot zoning thing comes in, because if, if we, if we make an, a, a decision to do something to protect a person versus all people, then we're in a position where we've now created the environment where it's right and, and, and trying to work it the right way. Sometimes it's frustrating because you try, you know what you'd like to do. And we started with this again, if you, coming to this new, Jeff had a poster that was at one time, this old book right there, that was the whole book. That was what was here. We've now evolved into.
This is nineteen fifty-seven.
That's the entire zoning.
Let's take a vote, let's switch back to.
See, and that, this is where we've.
A lot easier.
We, we've made a kind of a commandment on our board is if we add something in, we're kind of, we gotta take a couple of things out. So we're trying to, we're trying to work this at the same time every time we.
Just take a square here in the township.
I don't know how this applies to anything. I just want to say that I'm for whatever. I guess I'm for anything that makes it easier for small farms to exist. You know, for sure, like a variety of places, because I think the idea of like, we're going to shove everything that's this up here and everything that's that over here, like it's kind of nice to have a, a small farm, like more local to where you're at. And that's like opening a whole can of worms, but I think it's realistic to like how things work today. And obviously it's already happened.
Right.
So, um, I'm for whatever just makes it easier for people to do that without the headache and all the way around, so.
Consistency and doing it the right way, that's, I guess, the, how, how would and that's the loaded question, say, how would we do that? And certainly to me, to, to change the zone opens up probably more problems for you than it would protect, because I think it would be where the potential is there for someone to come and say, we did something as a favor. Again, not that it's just that he's on the board, but the fact that it's, it's more the position.
I would think it'd be easier for somebody to say that was wrong.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't do that.
And then we've, I think.
Heard a case.
There's more argument.
That's why we didn't do it until.
Yeah, more amicus.
Didn't until the neighbor expressed interest, because now it's two separate pieces of property, not just.
Right.
I think what John said is exactly what the opinion has been, is we're trying to figure a way to do it so we allow it more and not.
We want it.
Yeah, if we just handled this one instance, it's just this one instance, but if we look at it as like a township why? How to make it where it, it would just fall into it?
I mean, I know there's a lot more people that want to do more things on their property. I can tell you, I got a message today about a lady, not in this township, but in Nunica, who has like a goat and some chickens and they're telling her she can't have them. And, you know, she's like, I live in Nunica. You know, like.
Is, is it possible that we could establish some sort of, uh, threshold of minimum lot size that would that, that the owner could request and be approved for, so that it's not an arbitrary decision based on an individual. But let's say we're going to throw out a number of forty, fifty acres to qualify for an agricultural use zone. And you're not playing favorites, so to speak, at that point. I don't know if that's a possibility. It's just something that I thought of.
The master plan. I see, I don't, when we, we looked at that and, and that was something that was discussed, but I don't remember why we decided some of those things. If we, if we changed anything, if we went with what was already there for that, I don't remember that conversation.
I don't either, but I know we went through it, went through it.
The, the problem is there's really no way for us to, to do any, because it's, it's that the legal opinion says it would not be recommended to rezone the, this property without the owner's consent. Because of the large lot sizes and ag would probably make the property value, the property less valuable. So we can, I mean, we're thinking about rezoning these two parcels, but it, we couldn't just go in and change the master plan even though we're ready to update it, because if you talk about like rezoning that whole thing, then they're going to, the owners on that road that don't want it, he says not to do it, so.
There's too many small lots.
Right, there's too many small lots. I think ju, five point two A, where it says permitted uses farms, farm buildings and farming activities. I think we should look at putting it in the other zonings, in the other, in the other zoning districts besides just A.
That seems like a reasonable approach.
Did you say five point two A?
Um, yeah, five point two A, so, and B, I'm not even sure if B is necessary anymore, Steve, because the raising and keeping of livestock, when we pass that, we, it is an all zoning, so I'm not sure if we need to call it out now as a permitted use there. Because it's.
I'm trying to find that, because we've been in the general.
It, because it's not listed in the other ones now, even though it is permitted now, unless did we.
Yeah.
We just did that and that. But I know we did that all based on property size and.
Yes, exactly. We did, but it was.
Ex farm animals, blah, 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 and that applies everywhere.
Raising and keeping of livestock and other farm animals would be included under the banner farms and farming activities.
Right.
All I can tell you is when you go through a lawsuit, every single word that you put in there is like scrutiny to the smallest extent. In a bad way.
And that would be a principal use. And then I believe it's also allowed as an accessory use.
Oh, is that what it is? Accessory?
I'll double check.
Yeah, I know, that's.
The keeping of horses is regulated by four point three six, so we should just change that to, uh, keeping of animals under four point three. They don't see it in the R one gesture where it's an other use. It's just in the active where keeping of horses and other use.
If we put all the changes we made to the livestock.
It's a four point three.
Oh yeah, it's a permitted use in all zoning districts, voluntary rabbit, and it's an accessory use in all zoning districts for livestock. So like this no longer, B no longer really needs to be called straight out. Although some redundant seems nice, I guess, except when all of us are trying to flip through this huge document.
That's when that poster looks much more appealing to me.
Oh, I know, I love when I'm at home, I'm like, sorry, I'm search.
There's recently a book that Steve owns and I've looked at about repealing zoning altogether. But their simple two-step process is a similar title that they use for one chapter. And it's all stuff that I have previously looked at, and it's non-bible unless you have control of the state conditions.
Under the mass.
Controlling the state has two difficulties.
Not possible.
It's not, sometimes some people do.
We change that for the livestock to apply everywhere, poultry and rabbits apply everywhere. Gardening applies everywhere, right? Could we change that so you could? Garden your entire property if you want.
So with what you're already doing, the general ordinance covers everything.
I don't see where going egg is gonna increase anything other than the opportunity for somebody to say you spot the zone, that shouldn't be like that, we're changing it back.
More like towards complaints, cause.
So you have a lot of complaints?
No, but I'm just saying it just takes one person.
Right, but last but the ordinance wasn't like it is now.
But you.
That was part of the reason for the changes that we did there was to make it to, how it can do that. So that, they they can't hit the gas on that again and say we're gonna go back there.
They'd have to come and say, and try and amend what we put in there.
Right.
I mean, they always could, but, I mean, they'd have to make a case for it, which.
Same process we used to put it in, they'd have to run to take it out, that would be very, I think it could change, yeah. I mean, there's there's never, anything we put on paper can be kindling tomorrow.
Yeah, and that's, that was the whole thing, like for our lawsuits, like a lot of people think you can't farm in R two, it's, you know, I mean, it's not agriculture, you can't do that, so it's just.
And that's, that's the, well, we.
I can just say like in general, yeah, all the time, you know, people that come to our farm now, like, oh, you guys are R two, and they're always like surprised, like that we're.
They know that you're R two, but they don't know the ordinance well enough to know you can have livestock there. I would tell them to read the ordinance, if you already know I'm R two, but even if.
It is pretty misleading, like when they say ag, RC, it should probably just be the resource conservation district. Cause that was the whole point of it, is it's supposed to be the high wa- groundwater area, we're trying to conserve resources, it really has nothing to do with agriculture.
The way that is put on the master plan and the lack of input we get from people to be a part of it is overwhelming. And and really, sometimes it just happens as a result of no one's there to complain. We did the process and we, we went through a number of different steps, we even had open houses, we had, hey, we did a lot of different things. I thought we had a pretty decent turnout, but if you look at the small percentage of the population that actually comes in and is involved in it. I don't know if we hit the right buttons, I I can't tell, but no one was, wasn't strong enough opposition or something else saying they wanted to add in there. Well, I, I mean, I, I wish I could remember the conversation when we looked at the zoning, we we really didn't look at changing anything, because so much of it. You know, we did look at business di- di- districts and things like that to where we wanted to, for Whitehall Road and things along, that was most majority of the discussion was. That area, so when your situation came up, this definitely addressed it to now you have, you have the right. That is your right to do what you're you're doing and what you would prefer to do now.
So one question I would have is, what would be? What would stop, you know, five or ten years down the road if, you know, half of you guys are not doing this anymore? Uh, for people with a different agenda from coming in and changing it to be less favorable toward what we're trying to.
Nothing, but unfortunately, the problem is those same people are gonna rezone your parcel back to R two without your knowledge. So you're kind of.
I guess it's the end, you, your, our responsibility is coming in and can voice our concerns, really.
So there's, there's not a lot of oversight.
So, what would happen if you were rezoned or if permitted use was taken away? If that permitted use was already underway? It could continue as a lawfully non-conforming use?
Just grandfathered in basically.
Uh, that was, that's, yeah, grandfathered in, and that's mandated through the state's zoning enabling act. That we have to allow for non-conforming uses and structures to continue as they were.
So even if somebody did come through and change the zoning, they're still fine?
Yes.
If you're already doing it.
Unless the enabling act changes.
Yeah.
Pre-existing legal non-conforming, everyone calls a grandfather.
Yes.
So humor me for a second, is there any valid reason why, why A and B even have to be in here? And if they're in here for ag, why can't they be in the other ones if we? Why do we specifically call them out, that farm? Cause that, yeah, it does give the impression like, oh, I can only farm in ag, but that's not the case, so. I really, if if A and B could be either condensed and added to all the zoning districts? Or if they could just be removed from egg, so it doesn't make it seem like.
Yeah, I think we can pass to add them.
Yeah, add them to the other, that's what I saw.
But then it cha- I I wouldn't do that though, because then it changes your purpose. Read the purpose for each one, right? And so for ag on five point one, right, it says the purpose is limited development agricultural use, blah blah blah. Six point one, R one is predominantly low-density housing, not necessarily all of it, but predominantly. Then number two is higher density housing, it's the intended purpose, but I don't know, to me, if you go at changing that, now you gotta back up and change the purpose.
But.
It doesn't say you can't have a farm building there, it just, I mean, I don't know.
But nobody, e- e- even if you have a farm in R two or R one, you're not non-conforming, are you? Because if you're, so are you not conforming because it doesn't say farms?
It would be, essentially would be covered under the rights of farm act at a certain point.
Oh, the other, oh. But don't you, yeah, I don't, I, that's the thing, I don't.
You know, the right to farm act, like if we were exonerated, your culture's from the state, or other people were, then it would offer them more protection in the case of a lawsuit. Because what they do is they have like tiers that they use and they'll take your property and they'll like draw a radius around it and they count how many other houses are within that radius. So if like more people were to build around us, then that would drive us into a more unprotected tier and just be nicely.
Things, is there any other place we could put it in the ordinance to make it clear that, you know? Taking care of your, your family and producing your own food is is great and it should be allowed, when you have the room and you can meet the requirements?
Yeah, more people move and you should have more protection.
Yeah, you could let.
You know, you you would think.
Yeah.
That's like backwards.
It's like right now, behind us, uh, Creators, she's an older lady and her daughter just sold the ten acre corner. So what if they wanna put a subdivision there, to be over our limit of houses within our radius?
I mean, we have already, what else do you do on a farm that we haven't covered? I mean, we already, no matter how dense it gets around them, they still, now we have the new livestock ordinance and the farm animals and gardening.
And that operation's already going, if somebody comes and builds ten houses next door.
But that's how it starts.
I think my concern would be long-term protections.
Yeah.
That's really what it comes down to is, you know, let's say her example of, you know, a twenty acre subdivision goes on an adjacent property and all those, all those people don't like the fact that there's, you know, pigs next to their property. It's like, well, you're gonna get, you might get like a dozen complaints and then, and maybe it's not even you guys at that point, so they weren't part of this conversation. I don't know, that's, it it, I think it, it kinda cuts both ways. I can see your point as to, you know, people aren't gonna appreciate the potential change in property value. You know, we're not speculating on the short-term property values around, around here as a primary concern, but we do need to consider everyone else of the same power. So, I don't know, I guess it's not an easy answer.
I still say too, like Dave said, what we do for everybody, for the, every district, for everything, the better. It's, it's, less holes can get poked in it that way, cause we've been down this road too. You know, like you say, five years from now, rezoning, in my opinion, is gonna do nothing for you, because five years from now, somebody comes and looks and they says, whoa. Why is that, why is that so agricultural, that spot zone, why did they do that? Well, we don't know why they did that, change it back. And it happens just like that.
They have to go through some type of process, do that, just like we're doing now.
Yeah, but it's very, it it's, it's easy, I mean, like, you're better off adding livestock to all four, livestock being allowed to all four districts than you are rezoning your parcel. Way better, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's harder.
Because it applies to everything, I mean.
Yeah, it's harder, harder, harder even to change that than to just change those little parts, the hard little parts.
I, I like, I like with the way you guys are approaching it, it makes a lot of sense to me. I don't necessarily, after this conversation, feel like I'm, I I don't have my heart set on the pushing the agricultural uh reason. As much as seeing the thought behind what you guys are doing and, you know, if there's anything we can do to shore up those provisions for leniency. Uh, you know, maybe that, that's a, you know, a compromise.
Yeah, that's, that's, I can see their concern about the board changing, what if the next board says?
Yeah.
We wanna pull horses from R two, they'd still be grandfathered or?
Yes.
If they were using it at the time.
It was already, I'm going.
Really don't have much to worry about. There's no way to shore it up in the future, cause I have looked into that, right? So there's nothing that I can pass, there's no like bill of rights that I can pass, that you require a super majority vote or you require a more extensive thing in the future. That would, it would hold no legal weight, if I passed it, the next board could one hundred percent agree, which I have looked into. So there's no way to shore that up more, I thought there might be. Those things being added is a, is a protection.
Yep.
Cause it's, we didn't do it for, one, we did it for everybody. So you can't overlay something and say exclusions or inclusions, it's, this is the way it is. I, 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 sometimes it's frustrating, cause there's not easier ways to do things when you have something that's in your heart or something that you're trying to protect. But at the same time, you have to look at the flip side, how can someone come in and wormhole into it and create the holes?
After discussing this, it almost seems like we're maybe opening ourselves up to, if we had a future potential rezon back to R two. There could be an argument that that overrides the farming provisions that we have in place under the R two. Like, if if we're operating under the agricultural and assuming those rights and that goes away, maybe the whole thing gets called into question. So I think there's a strong argument for the way you guys are doing it.
Put in your farm now, you never have to worry.
So make sure you're continuing it every single day, cause the second you stop doing it, then.
That pasture is uh two going in the spring.
I'd like to see our zoning ordinance be more user-friendly too. Like, when it says, like, five point two B, when it says the ra- raising and keeping of livestock and other farm animals. Could we not put in parentheses, C section four point three, so you know what the, you know what all the rules are, that'd be so much easier.
It's true.
If you could call us like where to go.
I just need to allow to do.
Just do it, I'll just.
And if you want to, I, no, I think that would be good, cause I was gonna say, so I'm wary to, Steve does really well, I really appreciate work, Steve. Uh, but I'm wary to be like, oh yes, Steve, go through the entire book and make sure you reference everything else.
Right.
That is related to everything, right?
Yeah.
A brush.
You could start small though.
It's that addition of the master plan.
We could start small, when we start changing ordinances, maybe we could do the references at that point.
In the other uses, it does that, where it's like accessory bump, accessory, you'll be advised, like two, so something like that is adding it in in more places.
Yes. That is nice. Yep.
Are all of the things that we've recent, I, again, we're back, we did, we redid the books, everybody got, so we had, at one point, we found that some of the books weren't the same as others.
No, I think we all got new ones one day, not that one.
So that, that's, so that is where we are all starting, so that's, that's a big step forward for us. Houston did not have that, we, you'd say, well, look here, and I'd be like, that's not.
Lee and I had a different book one day, I was like, wow.
It's got provision two of terms that are not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and we have, we have the ordinances, the general code and zoning, that was up on Nunaco, which is a commonly used system for cities, villages, townships, municipalities in general. For putting our ordinances up, and that will be updated on a quarterly basis for updates we send them. So that system's in place, I'm tagging the website.
So instead of this, we need tablets for everybody, is that what you're saying?
Some places go.
Oh, it's Wi-Fi, you got Wi-Fi in the building?
Yeah, you can say in the show.
Should we specifically mention the livestock then, under the other land uses? That's the only other thing I'm, I'm seeing too, the the more I keep reading this, like, under seven point two permitted land uses, for example, right? It says may be used only for the following purposes, which kind of contradicts our general, that says you can put livestock on any parcel.
That's true, it does.
What about, how like?
So that in itself, I guess, gives somebody to stand on, right? That does give something, somebody to stand on and say, well, you can only use it for this purpose and it's not livestock, so should we add it in the other?
It's true, it creates a debate.
It does, because right here it says only. And it doesn't mention livestock.
That's a strong word.
But it is in the general.
Oh, yeah, yep.
See what I'm saying?
Well, like it's word in there. It's like there with a comb when you go through, right? Kind of the lawsuit. So another thing would be like, you know, since we are, it's our business would be another thing. I don't know about R two businesses, home-based businesses.
We have found through some of the litigation that's come up is two opposing lawyers have found things in here that supported their argument to a point where, like, how does that happen? And it just happens, it's organically, it's, you're working on this problem and you're working on this problem. You don't realize this one now affects this one or this one affects that one. And we've tried to find those and you don't until you have a practical example. That's, that's the issue we struggle with and sometimes the answer is, well.
The good thing is, we're agreeing with you. We want to contact what you want to do. We just want to make sure we're trying to do it the right way.
Yes, exactly.
I just see like this kind of stuff every day. Like I get those messages from people constantly, like in all townships all over Michigan about, um, the lady that messaged me in Nuneaton. Um, so she's wanting help from us because we went through that. Like it's just continual.
Yep. We are one administration removed from where it used to be, as you were very painfully aware.
Yeah.
How that process can, and unfortunately, how it can change. But at the same time, how can we maintain it and keep it from the next? That's our.
Yeah, so like the state of Michigan has a very similar thing to what you guys are doing here. And that they go over the gamps like multiple times a year. So we were going through our lawsuit. I had to drive and attend a couple of those meetings. And through the lawsuit we went through, they found many contradictions in even their writings and things that didn't make sense. They cross out stuff all the time and change it, make it more specific, less specific. Sometimes they want more of a gray area. Sometimes it wants, it just becomes such a crap show. You know, so it's just like, I don't know. You have like your guys' rules and the state rules and then those don't go together. So this is like the.
Yes, many times we don't matter.
Well, yeah, once you get to the state, I mean, what they says, what they say is usually gonna, you know, what you guys are saying. But, um, yeah, this is, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to farm. A lot of people are just trying to farm, even if they're not trying to sell stuff. You know, just for their, their children. They want to grow some food and just a shame, like, lots of things, I'm just jumping out.
Like John said, you would, you would think if you brought more households, they'd recognize the importance of your business.
Oh, yeah.
Rather than the other way around where they'd say, no, now we can, there's more of us, we can do step B, which is not what we're intending to do. And there's not a lot of things that.
The more, it's like the more houses you get, the more people want farming to be away from them in a lot of cases. They don't understand that. They think that, you know, they're just in their subdivision and that's what's meant to be in this area, you know, so.
Like a really, I think it's a very adequate way of looking at it, like. And I think those days are naturally gonna come to an end. I think that it's like a, like a luxury that has been like an abnormal thing of like the last hundred years, not even last hundred years.
Five dollar dozen eggs or?
I was just thinking.
All the supply chain problems and that five dollar, you know, a dozen eggs and all that, like all those days, like it's unsustainable and it's coming to an end naturally. So like, some of this, you talk about the long term, um, it might work itself out. My wife works at Gerber Bank up there in credit union up in Fremont. There's a lady who brings eggs in there and sells them to the employees, the, one of the people who works there. And people were walking out with eggs and I, and one lady said, they're keeping those in the bank though? And I was like.
I do think it's very dependent on like who's in the board because like Spring Lake Township, I think it was last year. Now they don't have, they both have not any agriculture zoning at all. They took it all away. Like I don't think more agricultural is ever added. It's always, it's always taken.
You look at our, you look at that, the one thing that's really positive about when we did the, the, you know, the master plan is we, we've got double-digit growth all the time. The number of households coming in, the number of people coming in. We're a growing area. We got lots of room to grow in. What we have to worry about is things like you're saying is how do you prevent it from growing in the wrong place? And getting around things that were always something and then now they can't be or won't be or.
Well, because like Allendale's very much growing. I have a friend that just moved out of Allendale for this exact reason that we're talking about right now. She has, um, you know, four or five children. She bought some goats for much. She had some chickens and some rabbits. Uh, farmland behind her was bought and they put in a huge subdivision. She was very complaining. Township got involved. Now she lives in Robinson Township.
There's a lot of boards in, in municipalities that are very short-sighted and they don't, they don't look at the big picture and they make a lot of very poor decisions that are not, not going to work for them in the long run. It's, it's very sad to see.
Jeff said it before too.
Yes.
Well, I think to John.
It's a change.
To John's point, I think that there is a cultural shift back toward appreciation of what you guys are doing. So I think that that lessens the danger that going forward in five years or 10 years that people are gonna be shutting down good food supply or, or, or seeking to, hopefully. I mean, there's no way to control that, but.
I think right now there is like an eye opener after, you know, I think it went on the last two years, but you know, people are,
Yeah.
people are so fast to drop something and move on to the next thing that you just don't know.
Is it safe to say you don't feel secure there long-term?
No, I don't.
I got a solution. Pumpkins? Hayrides?
Well, see, that's whatever he wants. We need, that's only gonna turn the society the other way. Not, not differently.
It's not a, it's not a petting zoo.
Deception of.
It's not a petting zoo. It's.
Become more of an asset to the community or she, like, I'm not suggesting you're not already.
I see your point because the state, even the state is like agritourism is becoming so important to them. Like, what about the actual workings of the farm? Yeah.
Is it, because it's money.
It's like a zoo zoo.
Yes.
It's, it's money.
State is all for it, but.
They look forward to it.
Money. The more you make, the more taxes they get. That's how it works. I mean, usually. Right?
I just want everybody who wants to eat, make and grow their own food.
It's a lot. I could see school buses in the hall.
I know. I don't wanna see them though. I know.
Well, we had that there before.
Well, maybe I do, but I wanna see them like seeing animals actually doing what they do. But it's like, oh, feed them some pellets or whatever.
I've had people from Chicago that have never seen a cow before and that's like amazing.
I'm not suggesting it all your doing.
Oh, yeah, we've thought about it before. I mean, we've.
I would help. I would volunteer to help.
It's been discussed before, but it's just, yeah, we need to, yeah, it's very hard to.
I think a petting zoo is a cool idea for certain, but I don't see you guys wanting to.
No, but we're, yeah, I guess we're gonna get an option.
Okay.
Sorry, I guess my whole thing, I think.
We need to add that four point three to the other uses. Don't you see? Are you gonna check on that with your attorney maybe?
Yeah, I'll check and see what the best way of doing that is.
So that's what our overall intention is, right? That we, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with anybody having livestock in R two or commercial or anything.
Right.
I don't, it necessarily conflicts with the purpose because it's, you know, we already have those large tracts of land.
Right.
It's being put to use until, you know, until that's developed in the future.
Right.
And it can still be.
So I guess, I guess I don't know from Michael Eagle's standpoint. That's where I just want to make sure everybody's protected. It's like I already said, which says may be only used for the following purposes. Just check this four over right there or just that?
It would be great, because the lawyers make a lot of money.
You could, exactly.
That's what I'm avoiding.
Right, so you could say, unless stated in the front part of this ordinance. Or, right, you could add wording, wording like that to some extent, or you could explicitly add those uses in.
Let's put it as an accessory use in chapter four in all zoning districts. But the point two deals or seven point two deals with principal land uses.
Right.
So it will.
Permitted. Oh, it's a permitted.
Yeah, permitted principal.
Right, because I mean, it, uh, it should be permitted to be a principal use everywhere, but can accept it, doesn't it?
Right. I guess that's all I want to make sure of is that it's clear because.
Right.
Yeah, so like in my experience, like if it's like you guys want farming to be allowed in more in a township, then the more specific you are with what you're allowing, the better as far as like a legal standpoint, like because
Makes sense.
they wanna know like exactly what, because if there's any kind of a, a gray area where they, or a lawyer can say, well, but you know, then that's the way they're gonna go with it, you know?
Yeah, because the judge is only gonna go off of what's there.
Yeah.
That's why I like what we did with our chicken ordinance.
Yeah.
Is there is no, like there is a number. You know, if you put a number on it, it's arbitrary to begin with, then, you know.
I'm not a farmer by any means.
Four point two five chickens.
And we were saying, how many roosters do you allow? And they were going, however many you'll support. You know, and I was thinking, you know, that's the way it should, should be. What, what works, works, you know? If you have too many, you're gonna find out why you only have X number. Um, so our, our thing is not to create the chaos, but.
That's where, that is where it comes in though. Like, there's people that don't have farming experience when they try and put numbers on things that they don't understand. And then the people that are trying to farm are like, this makes no sense, you know? It's like, so it just becomes an issue.
And we don't have many people who farm come in and say anything. This is a, they're an opportunity that.
Usually don't have many people at all audience, so it's, we've talked about maintaining, or just like the whole getting people in kind of things.
I probably shouldn't say anything. The last thing I want is a bunch of input from the general public.
Yeah, you.
Yeah, yeah, or that's to get these registered.
It's, it's, you get a bunch of these. There should be a lot of people in here.
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't think so. I think, you know, most of the people just wanna be left alone, you know?
But, but, but then, you know, like us, we're the ones that don't come.
The big part where they don't come.
Yeah, we don't come. We just wanna be left alone. Don't wanna come here. So then people there.
We're, you're busy, we're already working, but yeah.
So there's getting self-pleasure items and bad feedback mechanisms.
Right, right.
I don't know, but I think we need to make sure, I can do something to make sure that farming is protected everywhere. Because the other thing with this general, the general provisions on four point one eight here, it says, these provisions shall apply to all districts unless otherwise stated in the ordinance. So if I didn't want livestock on R two, I would say.
Well, it says only.
It's, it's unless otherwise stated and over here it says only the following purposes of farming, so I mean, you can't have animals there.
I think you're right. It would be.
So we need something.
It would go.
Say four point three is allowed in other.
Court of Appeals. The way it's written right now, it would probably make it to the Court of Appeals.
Right.
Is my guess.
Our intention is to let it in the general, so it to be allowed everywhere, but the more I keep reading this, the more holes in it saying, yeah, you're screwed.
Which is not our intention.
Yeah.
Add up. Yes, so I think that's a big thing. We need to that, add it in.
Like the only thing.
And I don't know if we add it to other or.
The thing that saved us last year was the state and that was because of the density of houses around us. And so like if more houses were to build around us, we would be in a different bracket and then.
But if we change this thing though, if we change this.
This is the point you can deal with.
It's gonna save, then it would go.
They can't complain to the township because that's, the township's the one that Ken started, right?
Right. They can't.
Then the neighbor started it, Ken started it, but he brought the township in, into it.
What all the township did was say, oh yeah, it's not in our zoning written correctly. So we just need to make sure it's in there correctly now. Well, correctly per our intentions at this very moment.
Right. I think we've got that one. I think that sounds good. I think, I think that's our best option at this point. And like I said, I, I think is, is density were to increase or things like that, we may have to look at something down the road, but. Situation, which is wild. Yep, so we got it.
All right, we're pretty well through that one. We are now going to move on to the primitive camping.
Right.
And now I'm probably gonna use myself here. Um, my wife and I have a, a land contract with this particular owner. So may I sit out and they?
Hey, come on down and.
And it involves a specific piece of property, so.
So what we are going to next is Dave Nichols, who is our owner of the bar, is looking to put in special use permit to establish a rested camping at the location, location is here his business. So we have.
Like time. Already said you can't want moon type of.
That's what I think and I, I don't, I know Dave, I go there once in a while, but.
If we don't, we can have a grown party there.
The first thing, um, it doesn't meet the zoning ordinance. Um.
No idea, doesn't excite me. I won't do that.
Sixteen forty-three B, number three, says there shall be adequate and convenient water supply and sanitary sewage disposal. So I don't, yeah, sixteen point four three B, number three. So that's kind of a hurdle right, right off the bat. I decided to start there. Um, because to me that means he would have to be in compliance before that, with that in order for us to prove his special land use.
Or have the site.
Yeah. Um, couple of other very minor issues. Well, they would be major for him, but, um, the, they're, they're not our jurisdiction. Um, as his site plan written, it also doesn't meet the state requirements for a primitive campground. It's missing a couple of things. Um, so in order to help him out when he's here, I'd love to direct him to the campground rules for the state of Michigan. Because I did see you're gonna require, and obviously we should require a permit from EGO. So he has, it's very well written if he just wants to look through it so he can make sure that he has everything. They also do require water to be on the same parcel as the campground. Um, and I think I touched on it earlier. He, his, his bathroom is too close to the property line. The state requires it to be fifty feet from the property line. Um, the township doesn't say anything about portage zones and where it can be. So he's probably okay as far as the township, but this.
You can't have just a portage zone.
You can't. No, you have to have. Right.
I did see somewhere where it can be part of annual permit, where they can use a portage zone as long as they have it pumped out.
Yeah, they have to have a contract with, that has to be approved by the health department, Muskegon County. From what I know, they're not, they're not too happy to do that because you can cut your contract with the company to maintain it whenever you want. But that's not to say they won't approve it. Because yes, that is also a.
Yes, yeah.
I did inform him that you.
But he doesn't have enough. He has to have, for the number of sites he's proposing, he has to have two.
Yes.
So he's a little shy.
Couple notes after we review that one, all sort of people requirements.
So water is the big thing. And I don't, that's a big thing for us because we require water supply too. Other than that, I had nothing to say. Can you believe it?
Water and two bathrooms. I guess one thing, just knowing the, the, the location pretty well. I mean, Dave's not here, but one thing I'm gonna have to know what he's doing. I mean, if he's doing this overflow parking area, I mean, that overflow parking has fall. I mean, most weekends. So my, my question is, what are you gonna do with that? They're gonna just park on the shoulder now? I mean, where are people gonna park if you're taking fifty parking spaces? Oh, come on.
Overflow parking, is that in front of the building or is it behind the building as well?
Like if, if, if there's somewhere to park, but there's not a tree, they're parking. There's been a lot of items in there that's.
Is none of the boxes are checked? Is this, is this zone C two?
This is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Here.
Oh, yours says C two, right?
I guess, I, I'm, I'm envisioning it's, it's right here, what I'm understanding, but I can't tell really from the site plans.
Yeah, like, yes, I know.
Where's that vacant, there's like a vacant building, oh, it's right here, it's, I think it's in this opening right here. I think it's that.
Oh.
Because of the way it curves in the back.
I guess this would be a different.
Also, his sites aren't big enough, they have to be twelve hundred square feet.
It's a building, I didn't know.
Alright, we already got all these things.
I thought it's over here.
Sure, like the rustic or not, okay.
Yes, yes, primitive sites have to be twelve hundred, he's close, if you bring him closer together, then he probably gives like a.
There's like this little thing, they use this.
No, apparently not.
What's happening in that parcel?
I don't know.
When I looked on GIS, it looks like the line is right in between those two buildings.
I was like, it's been put, been put from fire chief as well, cause it has a major corridor from the accidents right here.
It is.
I couldn't imagine if you're pulling in a lot of.
Oh, it's just a primitive, right?
So we know.
No, it's tent only.
Oh, it's tent only?
Uh-huh.
Would that change things a little bit?
I mean, I don't, does it actually ever say that they can't, it just, it just means they don't have utilities, but I think you could put whatever you want. I believe so, yeah. Right, cause if you have a generator.
And they're twisting around there and be fun.
Oh, I know. Well, and I'm guessing, I don't know how, sorry, I just grabbed yours and mine's right there. I, I, this definitely, the fire department would require that to be a sixty-six foot turnaround, I'm sure, because they don't wanna get their trucks jammed in there and have to back all the way out, so I'd love dimensions on that road.
You know, it is.
The road is sufficient.
It's only twenty-five, but yeah, you don't have any dimensions on that.
Just wanna make sure he's not putting in too small of a turnaround, cause yeah, the fire chief's not gonna like that.
I couldn't imagine sleeping in a tent down that road, I'd be good in.
I think that's a problem, there's gotta be a thing there. Don't hear that.
I, to me, it's crazy location, I admire the guy's creativity. How close are neighbors to that? House is right around it?
One's right to the south, sorry. There's a pretty close one to the south. Having that kind of off topic, but has anyone shown you the site visit reports or anything yet?
Yes, I do have one.
Okay. Uh, if you need copies of those, we go to look at those and the things that you're asking, that's like when I go and I have like my own wheel meter and things, I can, I can go and get distances and it puts it right of it, Dave speak, where trying to do it here sometimes doesn't make it a lot of sound to get you. If you ever need the forms, these are, so you can print a bunch of them.
On top of those baskets.
I usually get lazy and let Jesse and Casey are the ones that are the, the gatekeepers on all this stuff, and they start seeing all those measurements, I'm going, yeah, I noticed that too. That helps so much to, to know what I'm looking, then I can just go and validate.
Where, where is it show as a permitted land use, I don't see.
So it is, it is a public park?
Right, but where is public parks in C two? I see publicly owned buildings as a permitted use, so then I went to the special ones, and there's no P's at all. And then there's, there's a private roads in other land uses, so I don't, I don't see public parks. We're zone A, because we needed to be A, well, I mean, we're A anyway, but we're not C two.
You're R one.
No, we're, no, this is this, this is, um, the campground, right, you know, right, oh, it's in here.
Yeah, so you're R one there. But it's loud as a public park. Dude, it's the practicality that public parks don't necessarily have to be publicly owned, and they just have to be available.
I don't think this is right, uh, we have, we own a parcel right here that's our one, but this parcel right here is that used to.
It's not right, it's, we have a couple of them right here.
Okay.
Hold on to it.
Just, we have one, we have, we have two parcels, one is our, G I S is correct, it has one is A and one is. But anyway, does it say public park anywhere in here? Because when, when I originally looked, I was looking at A, cause I was dumb, I guess, and obviously public parks are in there. Oh.
It is in the C one district, it's allowed in the C one district, and by extension, um, eleven point three A, all uses permitted in the C one district with specialist approval, unless the use is permitted by right in this district. So anything permitted by special land use in C one.
Oh, okay, so for the C one.
And there's being a central service because.
No, they do not have a, uh, contract or the, uh.
It's a good reach, right?
Franchise, they don't have a franchise assumption.
I'm sure where, where, where is this public park in C one?
Uh, it's E, library public park.
Ah, thank you, I was looking at the P's, thank you.
Yeah. That's been a previous lawyer opinion that.
I know, made me laugh, cause I think he's wrong, but.
Campgrounds.
It's okay, bye, saved us the work of having to change things.
I believe we should have recreation facilities in most other.
Yeah, right, that would make it way more clean. So, yeah, M one twenty is always a source of lots of controversy and what should be built on there. But I'll never forget the time I was sitting in the audience of the planning commission, and they said no to somebody who wanted to build something on M one twenty, who had already gotten conditional approval from M dot for a driveway permit, and I thought, based on what are you saying no, so.
I know the group you're talking about, cause I was practicing actually.
You have to be really truthful when you say no, that you have a real reason that's in this.
Nervous, right?
District, the intent behind that, they really wanna cut down the number of curtsies.
Well, then maybe M dot should stop issuing driveway permits, I mean, that would be a very simple way.
Which is a significant logistical nightmare into the next few decades, for sure. I love that.
Ain't the only one.
I'd say, yeah, I think it's gonna end up like Grand Agen, where you have a major road, but you have a ton of stops eventually, yeah.
And I think that's been the master plan, basically everything's self-missioned and done, so you get maybe held. That's all A. But the intent is they wanna cut down the strip development, so it doesn't become like that. That was what they put in the master plan.
I thought it is if it gets past Allen's, then. I personally like to see everybody do what they bring up on their property, but not only that, simple one, right?
How does it work with, because water is required on that parcel, it, but that's its own legal parcel, correct?
Yes.
So it's not like you could run a private, well, you.
Yes, you could.
With an easement though, on file, or, because what happens if?
Correct, there would have to be an easement on file, he could run it from the fire.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
And there would have to be an easement.
But there'd have to be an easement.
And an agreement. Yeah.
Right.
For potential.
Well, there wouldn't have to be an agreement unless somebody else bought it, but there would have to be an easement, yeah. Or combine the parcels. So let's say all the drawing, everything, he makes all the compliant things to where he's got sixty foot six driveway, everything else works, works out. If he can get water there, he has to prove all of that, he has to get Z E G O permit, that's true.
What do we accept as adequate sanitary, or are that things, I'm sorry? Adequate and convenient sanitary sewage disposal, is that like up to our discretion? Because, because what I'm concerned about, since there is no dump station, is that you're going to have people dumping their gray water on the ground. Because sometimes you're, cause your gray water tank seems to fill up a lot faster than your black water tank.
Yeah.
So.
I think he was specifying no campers, like that's only.
Oh, yes, okay.
That was.
His intent, okay.
He was talking to me, he wants people to just be able to go there and pitch a town.
Okay. That would probably be for the best, because.
So you don't do that.
Right.
That would be in his best interest too, and because.
Especially with M one twenty.
Right.
Doesn't seem like it would have much payback, though, if you're only charging for a tent site, these are usually pretty cheap.
You can probably.
Well, you thought of a lot for him with, at twelve thirty at night. It's like, I know, you know, that's what I would do, I'd go buy a Walmart, sat there, be like, carry eighty bucks, you can stay there tonight.
Oh, man.
It was totally, but.
But that would be better for us, you know?
Privies allowed by, or by Eagle could be considered acceptable.
It probably, it would probably make them more inclined to approve privies being that if there's no camp, campers or tanks on site, otherwise they're gonna be really eerie to.
And that's not our approval, that's, 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 that's the next step, you know, that's.
No, that's not our, that's evil, so. That's between the health department and the state of Michigan.
You know, we always try to find a way, if there's, without stating affinity or negativity or what have you with the project, this one with all those things mentioned, has some, some things to go through, if he can get all those things put together, I, I think he'd have a, a case to potentially bring it forward. I mean, it's not our position to say whether we think it's the right fit or anything, it's, if it's legally set to go there and he can drop it and away we go. Yep, but he's gotta meet all those hurdles, and it's gonna be more than that drawing provides, for sure.
Yeah, well, and the first one is, he really should get quotes on wells, because it, because it requires water supply from, in the township ordinance. I think that might be his step one, and, and to make sure that the fire department would approve this site plan.
Next you know, at the township meeting, at the board meeting, after one of our meetings here, fire chief said something to me that, ask me next time. Can't remember what it was, wait a second, we gotta do something with that, sure.
Under campground, is there anything we'd have to do as far as, are you allowed to have fire pits, are you allowed to have? I mean, is that, any, you have to worry about, is that something calculated as part of his plan, if he puts them on there, that's fine, as long as.
They're on the plan.
The, just, plans in state will have to be done by a engineering firm, um, because he's got over the number of sites that they report, that you can just do by hand. Um, so, yeah, he will have to show a cut of what a typical site would look like.
And that's four, isn't it? Does that four sites?
If you have four or less, you don't, yeah, you don't need an Eagle permit.
Yes, it's not even close, dude.
No, he's not, he's got twelve, so. I don't think, I don't, I mean, I don't know if this is on our agenda to try to approve this next week. Is it?
It is.
Okay, I don't, I mean, I don't feel like we're anywhere.
Postpone until we have.
Yeah, I think we will.
There's a lot of things we.
There's a lot of things we still need.
And you can go public hearing.
Okay.
Until he has all the.
Do you have a list, then, are we required to provide a list of things he needs to look to, or is it need, would he see you?
Yeah, I'll give him a list.
Okay.
Sixty-six foot turnaround, I'll connect with the chief on it. And then once he has a final plan, it's not that soon.
Oh, okay.
A water supply, a site size. Basically, I'll just tell him to get the plan he needs from the state ready and submit the same one.
Right, because he's gotta move, he's gotta move his bathrooms away, he's gotta be fifty feet, so he's gonna have to reorient this anyway, so, a little bit to put the, I think, they have to be somewhere else on here.
I just, I thought I read somewhere.
I gotta do this, but I gotta go, so I can't stay any longer.
Have a great day.
Yeah, I have to be pretty quick. No, I, I'm in the middle of, uh, a lot of stuff, like, I have emergencies go deals, so.
Right.
Sorry.
Is that your jacket?
No.
Nope.
Uh, it's me, sorry.
Oh. Appreciate you guys.
See, we got through two, we got him this list there, then we got just two, two items remaining here, the one is the, uh, that can come back up now. It's the shunting of a rental equipment at John's Market. He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to have a driveway, I mean, what's a campground thing, he's gonna have to have a driveway on M one twenty anyway, so.
He will.
Yeah.
He wants to try and make it a driveway with the Uppin Bar, but I, they won't, I don't think that will work within the replayer. I don't think you can make it work and stay in the right, outside of the right way.
He's got too many things up in here that he needs to get. Is he able to dispensary?
I don't.
Is their driveways connect? I, I was, uh, we're talking. Oh, we're back on.
We're done though.
You circled back, yeah. I was thinking, man, there's a dispensary in there too, we got some news. I'll make a comment, there's, there's some measurement irregularities in, uh, the submitted drawing of that said property. But, we're on John's Market, now we're up to John's Market, yeah. I don't know if he is part owner of that dispensary, but we were talking, somebody made a comment about driveways.
No, we were talking about the campground.
Okay. Yeah, but, but their driveways do connect, yeah.
Yeah, they have.
This one started out enforcement case. They ever complained that he was renting U Halls out. And that's permitted use, but he had a site plan review that had that.
Yeah.
Use. And so I sent him a letter and he.
Yeah.
And it was about the application, yes, that was the first letter. And a gentleman from U Hall also came and talked to me about it. Explained what shunting was, they put it, um, you don't rent them on the site, deliver them to the site to be picked up by the renter. And then they return it to the site, and then it's brought back to their U Hall facility.
Oh, okay, so.
I'm sorry, can I?
It's not a standing inventory of.
Correct.
Choose your truck, this is what I have, twenty-four hours, that place is not happening. They, they, well, I mean, it's not like, it could be there three weeks, or.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I would imagine that's.
Period in the summer. So when I went and investigated over the summer, nothing there. My complaint came back. I went, it was, it was there.
What were they complaining of, were they complaining of? What were they complaining of? Were they complaining of the fact that it's happening or the fact that they were doing it without a permit? And if they knew they were doing it without a permit, that person should be on the planning commission. So were they mad that it was happening or mad that there was no permit?
I think they were upset that it was happening.
Okay.
And didn't like the main place, where they live in place.
Yeah, see, this, I look at it as the drawing or the picture. If they're parked there, there's dwellings.
Right next door.
Right next door, and I could imagine if they were parked back far enough where they were being dropped or.
That is a gravel, gravel driveway. There's more concerns with anything that, they were concerned with, um, fluids from the trucks.
Yeah.
And the wells.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you just said?
They were. There was a scrap right there that was.
There was.
There was fluids coming from the trucks.
Oh.
And what's wells in the area.
Oh, okay.
It's gravel. Because it's gravel.
Without the full story, I, I came in, came into this meeting wondering if there was the adjacent residential properties and the visibility and the height of the fence and. That, that sort of thing.
I think screening might also play a factor.
Had they considered parking them anywhere else? I mean.
They did. I recommended parking them along. Between the building and Holton.
Yeah.
Think that they needed that.
For deliveries.
Did they block the driveway there?
Oh, Stephen, I have a general question about that, um, property. There are families that live there, adjacent to the store. There's a two-story residential up. So, I don't know, that's permitted, I'm assuming, but does that in, in any way affect their other business aspirations? It's a unique.
Residents is on the property?
Yeah, it's a unique setup, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that's all existing, not informing.
Yeah. My understanding is that business has been in Twin Lake for a long time and, um. It's changed owners, but I think the name stayed the same or something, but I know that there's at least one family living there and, um.
Is there?
Not unusual.
Main concern is the trucks leaking, I'm like.
Yeah, because they're parked on the gravel section and not the paved section.
That was cited to me.
That may not be our ma- major concern, but that was theirs.
The validity of that.
Right.
How would we ever check that?
Licking what, like oil?
I'm gonna go put paper plates under all of them, I'll report back to you.
Don't say the thing takes off for him, maybe he gets fifteen trucks.
Well, it said he was gonna limit it seven in his application.
Which is what's in the picture, which look pretty normal on a, on the high end, that's it.
So it's permitted, we just have to figure out a way to bury it happening with the happiness of the neighbors, correct?
Pretty much.
Yeah, essentially just a site plan that.
Okay. So, yeah. He wants to put them right where they are on the Google Maps.
Correct.
Okay.
Placing them where the planning commission feels appropriate.
Well, I'd probably need to drive out there, so I'm not of any help tonight.
It's not like the best.
Yeah, we should go check.
It looks like there's a fence there, I don't.
Yeah, these are, there's a chain link.
The chain link, chain link fence with stuff growing out, it looks like, so it's only.
Yeah.
Three feet out.
In the GIS photo, he shows three trucks along the property, three trucks on the, the backs, and then two more. On the one that you had mentioned, yeah.
Really?
So there's eight trucks.
Eight counts, or they.
Realistically, they would be. There's only room for one in that area.
They've got two boxes.
That side of the property would seem, I mean, I, I can see where if he's got deliveries and things along that, but if you were to go on that side. Running down, you know, right along Holton Road there, or at least on that lot as close as you get to that. He's got some vehicles, it looks like parked there.
Mm-hmm.
And she, it sure looks like you could fit seven vehicles right there and not have even a, because that would affect his customer parking, which I don't know if that's part of our issue.
I don't believe the gravel is part of the required parking.
I don't think there's ever been, he would be happy if he had that many cars there at one particular time, but you're overboard.
What about just enforcing the screening between commercial and residential and get a fence or something put up so the neighbor doesn't. Have an open view to a U-Haul truck?
That might.
That'd be my biggest.
Might be a violation.
Staring at the truck out the window and returning up the back.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, if it's not feasible to move them to the other side of the building, obviously, the closer they are to M one twenty, the less they're gonna affect the residential parcel, but. It looks like there's a lot of room there, I'm.
That's a, a visit suggestion for.
That's, I think, the other thing that might be helpful, I mean, just to make a peace with the neighbors, just them three that he shows on this Google, it's just.
Two of them over here and one way up, one way up by one twenty, you got all up that property line.
Right. Right. Yep, then he's got the four there and.
It's a setback even.
And then the other ones are way over there and it seems like it makes it a lot better for the neighbor, and it seems like you could. Accommodate that.
I think that's a.
Go happy.
If that's a staging area for, uh. Trucks that have a contract, they're, they're going to be rented, then I'd be surprised if there were seven or eight there at one time, you know, right?
Right.
They're doing people a favor, so they don't have to drive to Apple Avenue to be U-Haul business, I guess, and then turn back around to head north. Sounds like, I don't know if they're affiliated, they must be, but.
I think it's, he's pretty easy, just recommend the. Holton roadside and.
Love.
And, 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 yes, yes, he said, that's great.
Minimize the north lot.
But it can still be parked along there.
The building?
Along the building, along the.
That was one of the, yeah, I'm just.
Not.
Not those three, right, tight to the property line.
Yeah.
Trying to let him do what he's doing, but making.
Yeah. And that's my.
As easy as kind of a neighbor.
That's what I tried to point towards, just making sure there's, trying to move.
This has been going on since the summer, pretty much?
As long away as possible. I believe it was since this summer.
Okay, so this.
Yeah, he's had him there for a while.
It's GIS overlay is wrong.
It is.
Also, maybe it didn't load all the way, I'm like, Main Street's running in the middle of the right of way, neither someone funny. And half these houses are on two different parcels.
Mine is.
Well, my ass, my ass, why you know.
Out there like a chicken.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. It's not one hundred percent.
I'm like, it looks to me like he owns their garage, so maybe you could just park him in their garage.
No, that property line should be salted.
Yeah, okay.
East by where the fence is, that's gonna be more accurate.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. I mean, I assume that.
Yes.
There's a lot of room on that website, that's where the.
It's a nice, it's a nice piece of.
That's where the parade or exchanges is right along there.
I think we just need to talk to them next weekend. This should be pretty easy.
Yeah, we'll do a second visit on that one, just to confirm what we're seeing, that'd be helpful a lot. All right, the last thing for tonight is the draft ordinance amendment, I think that. You'll have a chance to review and see if that's the. If that was.
Well, I spent a lot of time reading lots of zoning ordinances about this. And, A, I just don't think there's any, nobody has this detailed information about slope. Just, can we just change it to a three to one on every side? If it's okay for Fruitland Township and all the other townships around here, it's probably safe enough. Apparently, a four to one slope is tiny bit easier to mow, not my problem, than tell your contractor to build it as a four to one slope, but. I just think you should take all that verbiage out and just say, all men and ponds shall be constructed, so the slope is no steeper than three to one. Okay, if everybody doesn't mind.
If you wanna maintain that depth.
Yes, but most places do five feet. They do, ours is only four feet, and maybe it's because we only require a four.
I just added that in.
Okay.
That wasn't in there previously, that's provising, someone could just write it and stop. And then the point of having an escape.
Right.
Is out of the.
Okay, I, um.
You know, I've seen three to five as.
I, I think we should just do five feet. Seems to be good for everybody else.
Any issues with that? No.
Um, so, in F, I, so it's a hundred and eighty days. And then the zoning administrator may extend the time needed for an additional ninety days. I would like to propose that that cannot be, a hundred and eighty days is six months, I mean, come on. I would like to see the zoning administrator part changed to the planning commission, because after six months, I'd like to know why you can't finish and what the problem is. I, I'm not sure it should be left in charge of one person at that point, that might be a little too much, but that's just a proposal.
Not a special land use, just a trip to the planning.
Right, exactly, just to like.
Formal.
Right.
Vote.
Exactly.
I don't need to know, so, I disagree.
I just, my thought process there was, he's great and Lorraine was great, but the ones, the ones before that weren't so great and. I, I, I like a little flexibility to have more than just one person's opinion on things, that, that's only where I was coming from, is, is that.
What are we gonna ask of them? Just.
What are you going to ask of them? How much longer do you need? What's taking so long?
That's what I guess the question.
Right.
Essentially, you know, are you, just kinda, how close are you?
Right.
As you could say to him, hey, you think you can get it done in thirty days, instead of ninety days, you can say, can I get another thirty days?
I think at that point, you ought to give them another seven days and be like, you're done. I mean, you can't do this forever because it just. I don't know why you'd need another nine, ninety days after a hundred and eighty days. Yeah, that might be a good.
I will rely on the rest of the round table on that one, because I would not know what to ask. I, I mean, I'm not a, a proficient enough in that to, to say, if somebody needs another ninety days, what, what, what does ninety days accomplish if they do it? How much did you get removed in a hundred and eighty days?
Well, maybe we could lessen that, the zoning administrator may extend it for seven days, fourteen days, something to. Make it serious that we need it done.
And I mean, a hundred and eighty days, the hard. Say, you know, just letter, 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 ticket. The client's order. I think the ninety days would pretty much just be. An extension of that, so we don't have to go through the enforcement process, but yeah.
Okay.
So good the way it is? I mean, everybody, yeah, okay. All right, so that, any other?
Um, H, number one, I think, I think that may be a little bit too harsh to say such time period may not be extended or altered. Um, I feel like you might need to give somebody an out. And I don't know if we want that to be then, that a review by the planning commission, or what you want that to be, but. Because what are, like, I mean, what do you do then? You just, you start the enforcement process, is what you're saying?
Essentially, they can't. Yeah, and that's something where. That would be a tricky situation with the enforcement process, where if I were to see someone, you know, say, okay. Now, your thirty days is up, you can't haul any more dirt out, and then the next day, I see you hauling out dirt. Well, I can't really, can I really write them a ticket? Under this, I can, because like, it's something I see, you're by, you know, you knew in advance what the terms and conditions were. It's not like a comment, like, thing where, okay, that they're being informed. This would be something where they're expressly breaking with something that's known.
Okay, it takes you back to the hundred and eighty days thing too, doesn't it? If you're giving them thirty days to haul it. They can't haul after thirty. Hundred fifty days pushing sand around to level up your property. Is that the wrong interpretation?
Where would the sand end up ordinarily for a private pond?
Ordinarily, it stays on the properties the way it's been working.
Yeah. There's no real financial incentive for me to dig a pond and two for one, I get to sell some sand.
Not really, because most excavators would charge you to dig the pond and then, even if they pay you for the sand in the pond, they're gonna then charge you just way more to dig it and haul it away and. So no, the only way that works is if the excavator is the property owner, then.
Yeah. Okay.
I did wonder what everybody thought about, there were several municipalities that required a completion bond. And, like, I know our main sand mining has a road bond, which I think is so funny, because. More than anything, you want them to complete the process and make the, make the land.
Sorry, really, doesn't have it, that comes from Bowman. Yeah, and that's. So, our zoning gives a financial guarantee for, for, for completing your restoration, it's not for the road.
Oh, it is? Oh. Okay.
Bowman's one that requires it for the road, which this, that's where this, that also creates a problem, because they're gonna, they're gonna skirt them and then. And that's the trash or gravel road that somebody lives on, and then there will be fistoff, but Bowman didn't know about it, and it's gonna, it's gonna. Read that.
And, and I also did think about reducing the ten thousand to one thousand, because like, everybody does a thousand. Um, Rivanna was the only one that did two hundred a year.
Yeah, I heard three thousand, I seen three thousand, it was in Portland Township.
Oh, okay.
It was connected to a construction project.
Right.
And I think that if you wanna be, you know, more lenient than others, I think three thousand's good.
Okay.
Honestly, plenty.
Ten might be setting people up for failure, causing them to make messes.
That'd be in general, tabling here, you can make a mess, yes.
I mean, I could potentially require a road bond myself as a condition of something that's impact the roads.
But all the other ones are, yeah, the other four townships she gave us were two hundred, six hundred, thousand, thousands, I mean, I could, thousands would be reasonable, I think, tens. A lot. A couple of things I looked at though too, I think this needs a little more work, it was by, um, since we're looking at it, I, I looked up a couple other things. So there's several things that I think we should at least have in here to at least bring their attention to, like, the DQ. Rules, for example, because, you know, so that somebody doesn't go do something and get themselves in trouble, right? So I mean, as long as we're looking at it, right, so the DQ says, you know, you can't dig a pond within five hundred feet of a body of water. Right, which is going to be, uh, tony drain, a lake, whatever, or within a wetland, or within a hundred year flood. And, and one thing, one tricky thing that I learned hardly years ago was the DQ's gonna call some of these county bitches out, you have body of water, if they have water staying in a drought.
Yeah, been there.
So, I think we should at least look at those few DQ requirements and at least say, hey. These are DQ requirements, make sure you look at them. The other thing, I did some real quick research, real quick, but. The county health department, for example, says you can't put a septic system within four hundred feet of a body of water. Now, do we want people digging ponds twenty feet from their existing septic system?
Yeah.
That's a big source of contamination into surface water, which is now groundwater.
That was in somebody's, that's in Fruitland Township's ordinance.
Need to look at a little bit of backwards engineering there, as far as what does the health department allow? Next to a pond, what, what should we make people aware of?
Yeah.
When it comes to well and septic, because, you know, as long as you do it right, it's fine, but when you think about it, right? Sand or soil is one thing that's protecting your groundwater, that's your filter. Now, when you take off an acre of that and you open it up to the air, it's fine, but now there's sources you gotta look at for possible contamination, and septic's a big one.
We don't have septic's currently written for.
We don't, no, right now, our pond thing is very, very vague, and then we start looking into it, and then. So then I just quick looked a couple of, a couple of these things up this afternoon, it's popped in my mind real quick, sounds like, well, what about the DQ and what about Bowman's?
Those are good ideas.
So as long as we're looking at it, you know, to bring that stuff to people's attention, because otherwise, you don't know. You dig, you dig a pond twenty feet from your septic system, that's fine.
And not stand there going all the township's. And not stand there going, oh, the township's on it, too.
Right.
Township didn't say that, good.
People don't understand, right? So I think we should look at the DEQ stuff in the county health department, as far as if you're doing it the other way. Which, which also leads to some of the setback stuff, you know, if somebody puts I don't know where you limit it, because I'm all about property rights, but if you put a pond twenty feet off your property line, and our ordinance says you can't have a septic system within three hundred foot of a pond, now how worthless is the lot next door? So do we need to keep that pond back more than twenty feet from the side property line?
Yeah.
You were just like, how many parcels you could buy up to get five thousand, that yards of sand, huh?
I don't, three hundred acres, I don't even do that, I don't care about that, it's about stuff down the road.
Yeah. Yeah. Good point, and respect the neighboring parcels.
As long as we're looking at it, I mean.
Yeah. Those are all good points.
And there, yeah, I mean, if somebody's got forty acres, go dig a ten acre pond, I don't care, as, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
But.
Also.
I know.
What?
KC.
What is the setback? I think the setback from a septic in Fruitland Township was like twenty feet or something, it was like.
I've seen fifty.
I've seen fifty in a couple of them.
Okay.
Common.
But, and I guess I just real quick read through the health department's website tonight before I came, and there said four hundred, which seems extreme to me, but it did say four hundred from a for installing a septic system from a body of water, which part of it is to, look at Twin Lake, and everybody went the hard way, this doesn't work so good.
Yeah.
Yes. Right.
It's true.
Now, four hundred might be a little extreme, because, because your typical separation on your septic, and well's like seventy-five, but you, you, a lot of times, you have fifty or sixty foot of vertical separation.
Mm-hmm.
And you do end up with, just like the lakes, you end up with a significant problem now that's basically impossible to crack.
Nobody thought so, in nineteen forty.
Right. It wasn't a concern, I mean, people didn't live there around, they were small cottages, they were.
No, I, but I just, I ran across, I, I looked at the health department website, like I say, for two minutes, and
Mm-hmm.
I was looking at well and septic bowls, and it did say you can put a well within ten foot of a body of water, it says four hundred on septic.
Yeah, some of those little tiny parcels on the lakes are Airbnb's, so they have ten people in the weekends.
Well, yeah, I say four hundred, it's not extreme to me, but I think you should at least consider that, or bring it to their attention, or maybe even talk to the department, be like, okay, hey, what, what about a pond, you know, what, what's because there says lake, stream, or similar body of water. You know, hey, honestly, what do you think about a pond? It's hundred foot reasonable? You know, to where, then you say, okay, now that your site's setback, and that's
At least.
where it's gotta be from your septic, so we're being reasonable, I think four hundred's fine. In my opinion, but not. Health department's special, so make some changes, then we can bring it to next, next week's meeting and see if they can review it then, if we're good with that, maybe.
Let's get it.
Where's this one at? Is this one at a hearing?
This is a.
No, it still needs to be moved to a hearing.
Okay.
It's a file, still doing a draft.
Yeah, it's still.
Might be able to have a draft ready for next week.
I can't throw a lot out there.
Why, they were just spending no time like that?
Those are very good points.
Okay, review it next month, or next.
Left this one with all those holes.
Yeah.
One I don't want.
That's a good idea. There's nothing in there right now, but I mean, lots of looks at it, it's.
Another week, we'll hear, we'll explore more.
Environment, environment's good. Week, or week and a month, and I think we got, let's see how, what we're in there. All right, well, that takes us through our, uh, list of topics today, is there any, anyone else would like to cover?
I'm hungry.
All right, then I will, uh, take the motion. I'll make the motion, whether you have Casey supporting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, Casey adjourned.
Saw the agenda, I was like, oh, man, teaching this to me a long.